Good evening, everyone. This meeting of the Coventry Town Council will now come to order at 6:01 p.m. Roll call. Ms. Ludwig, here. Mrs. Shockley, here. Mr. LeBlanc, here.
Here.
Mrs. Lima, here. Mrs. Dixon, here. May I have a motion to adjourn into executive session for the following at 6:01 p.m. Closed pursuant to Rhode Island General Laws 4246-5A2, sessions pertaining to collective bargaining or litigation specifically to discuss the status of the center of New England receivership matters captioned as Nicholas E. Cambio, trustee and others versus Commerce Park Realty LLC and others, PM 130350, and the receiver for Commerce Park Realty LLC and others versus Commerce Park Management LLC, PB 135001 with the town solicitor. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, vote. Ms. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mrs. Shockley?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Lima?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon?
Yes.
Five yays, no nays. The motion passes. Members of the public, we will resume in public session at 7:00 p.m.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening, and we apologize for being a little delayed from getting out of our executive session, so I appreciate your patience. May I have a motion to adjourn from executive session at 7:15?
I'll make a motion. I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Ms. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mrs. Shockley?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Lima?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon? Yes. Five yays, no nays. The motion passes. May I have a motion to seal the minutes of the executive session?
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second? I'll second it. Thank you. Roll call vote. Mrs. Shockley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lima?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig? Ms. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon? Yes. Five yays, no nays. The motion passes. Members of the public, pursuant to Rhode Island General Laws 4246-5A2, sessions pertaining to collective bargaining or litigation specifically to discuss the status of the center of New England receivership matters, captioned as Nicholas E. Cambio, trustee and others, versus Commerce Park Realty LLC and others, PM 13-0350, and the receiver for Commerce Park Realty LLC and others, versus Commerce Park Management LLC, PB 135001, with the town solicitor. The discussion took place, no votes were taken, and this agenda item will be tabled in our agenda. B1, roll call by clerk for presence at this meeting. Mrs. Shockley? Here. Mrs. Lima?
Here.
Ms. Ludwig?
Here.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Here.
Mrs. Dixon, thank you. Pledge of Allegiance, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Mr. LeBlanc, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of Town Council meeting minutes. May I have a motion to table the main meeting minutes for November 13, 2021, because we did not receive them until late today?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Roll call vote. Mrs. Shockley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lima?
Yes.
Ms. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon? Yes. Five yays, no nays. Now, pertaining to meeting minutes for November 22nd, December 20th, and January 24th. Madam Clerk, did you receive any corrections?
Yes, and they've been made.
Have you made the corrections?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Were there corrections for each of those three minutes, meeting
No, December 20th and January 24th.
I'm sorry, would you repeat that?
December 20th and January 24th.
Okay. Okay. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for November 22nd, the amended minutes for December 20th, and the amended minutes for January 24th?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call vote. Mrs. Shockley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lima?
Yes.
Ms. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon? Yes. Five yays, no nays. The motion passes. Certificate of recognition for Anthony Lombardi and Mario Cornella. Chief Brown is unable to attend this evening, and so I'm going to ask Assistant Chief Kevin Cady if he will please come forward. Thank you. And Anthony Lombardi, would you please come to the podium with Mallory Lombardi and Tyler Mario Camilla, would you please come forward to the podium with Stephanie Camilla and Mario We have a certificate that we're going to read to you, and then we're going to ask the Assistant Chief to make some comments, okay? First of all, the Coventry Town Council recognizes Anthony Lombardi and Mario Camilla, who rescued three dogs on January 1, 2022, from a smoking home in Coventry. Anthony and Mario heard fire alarms coming from their home, contacted a friend who gave them a code to unlock the front door, called for the dogs, and then unlocked a crate to release a third dog. The Coventry Town Council congratulates Anthony Lombardi and Mario Camilla for their quick thinking, problem-solving skills, and compassion for their neighbor and her three dogs. In testimony thereof, on behalf of the Town Council, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the town to be affixed this 26th day of January 2022. We're a little delayed in giving this, but thank you so much. And Chief, Assistant Chief Cady, would you please make some comments?
Yes, on behalf of the Fire Department, Central Coventry Fire Department, and all firefighters in Rhode Island, we would like to thank you guys for doing a heroic effort, recognizing the fact that the smoke detectors were going off and finding a way and using your resources to get in the door and let the dogs out, and then waiting outside for the fire department to show up. I'll stay on the job, guys. I think you did an outstanding
Anthony, would you like, Anthony and Mario, would you come forward, because we have a special certificate for each of you? Well, it is very, very beautiful. It is very, very beautiful. Okay. Would you come forward to get your certificate? And I'm sure each member of the council would like to shake your hand so you can go by each one and meet them?
Awesome job.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Congratulations. Thank you for your bravery.
Great job.
Now wash your hands.
Two citations from the government of Rhode Island for this true young man.
Oh, that's excellent. Are you going to read the citations?
Earl Newman from the Rhode Island SPCA.
Okay.
If you would like to.
No, I'm sure. What is your last name, please?
Newman.
Earl Newman?
Yes.
Okay. Please introduce yourself to the council and to the members of the public. Please state your name and address, please, and then read the citation.
Good evening. My name is Earl Newman. I'm the Senior Law Enforcement Officer for the Rhode Island SPCA. On behalf of the SPCA and the Governor of the State of Rhode Island, we have two certificates here, one for Mario Camilla and Anthony Lombardi, for recognition of their bravery and heroism while rescuing your neighbor's dogs, Faith Boo and Chase during a house fire. In honor of placing your life in danger in your tremendous act of kindness, the Governor has issued these certificates of special recognition. So I
Thank you all, thank you all for coming. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone, and thank you for coming and joining us. I don't like to think that we got trumped. I think we inspired other people. We brought everyone together. We brought everyone together. We're inspiring people. Okay. The next certificate of recognition is Virginia Susie. She was unable to attend this evening, but we will hand-deliver a certificate of recognition to her, so I will read this. Whereas the Coventry Town Council and the Coventry Zoning Board of Review recognizes Virginia A. Susie for exceptional dedication and loyal service as a member of several town organizations, and whereas your outstanding contributions are many, and the Town Council recognizes two noteworthy ones. Whereas you were elected member of the Coventry Town Council and served from November 1991 through November 2002, and whereas you were appointed member of the Coventry Zoning Board of Review and served from May 1982 through May 1991, and from September 2004 and through March 2021. And whereas, the Town Council and the Coventry Zoning Board of Review extend their sincere gratitude for your many years of service. So as I mentioned before, this certificate, which I will hold up, is signed by me and will also be signed by Mr. Crowe, who is the chairperson of the Zoning Board of Review. He was unable to be here this evening, but we will get his signature on this certificate and hand-deliver this certificate to Mrs. Susie. So we thank her for her many years of service. Another fellow Town Council person. Excellent. Agenda item B5, certificate of recognition for Coventry Human Services, will be presented by Vice President Jennifer
So we'll have Director Robillard come forward.
Director Robillard, good evening.
That's a tough act to follow right there.
We told the Governor to hold off.
Yours is in the mail.
Thank you.
Ready?
Okay, so we, we have talked about the 'Tis the Season' program. We had you come in a couple months ago. Lots of initiatives going on at the Senior and Resource Center. So we've had you come chat with the council a couple times over the past year. And one of the things that I, I wanted to just make sure that we followed through with as a council is not just promoting events, but actually seeing all those successful numbers and people that we're helping. And I really think that the council would love to recognize yourself, Director Robillard and your staff, and all the amazing persons and community members who provided for the program as well. And so this recognition is, is a bit of showing off to say, you know, how great this program is, how many residents that we've helped, and also a thank you to you, your staff, and the community. So the Coventry Town Council wishes to express a sincere thank you and public recognition to the Coventry Resource and senior center staff for a successful 2021 'Tis the Season' social services holiday program. A total of 476 individuals were helped, including 151 families, 250-plus children, and 217 adults. In addition, the Coventry Community Food Bank helped an additional 200 families with Thanksgiving or Christmas baskets. The Coventry Town Council is proud of Director Robert Robillard's leadership of the program and the extraordinary efforts made by the wonderful team of professional social workers and community contributors that made the program a success. We hope to see this program continue in the future. And we have Ann sign this document, and we'll give you a copy.
Would you like to make a few comments?
I would like to.
Yes, I know.
This, this program's been going on for nearly 20 years now, and it's a true community project. I have to thank, it's not just our staff. We work very closely with our first responders, Chief Brown and his staff, Chief Heiss and his staff, municipal departments, DPW, and our town hall employees are a big part of it, the Coventry Housing Authority, local businesses, local families. One of the things, this particular year was a tough year, you know, economically for folks, and we had the most donations we've ever had. We've able to, to help more people this year than ever before. So the more, I think we have to realize that Coventry's a strong community that really takes care of itself. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Agenda item B6, certificate of recognition for Miranda Bouchard. Vice President Ludwig will present the recognition, or read the recognition.
So Councilor Lima and I co-sponsored this, and I accidentally thought that this was only on Zoom. Is Miranda on Zoom with us? Can we maybe promote her to, it's Miranda Hi, Miranda, are you with us?
Hello, I'm here.
Hello, I'm so sorry. I got it wrong. I almost didn't show up myself. So thank you for joining us on Zoom, and I have your recognition in front of me, so I'm going to read it, and then I'll also get you a copy of this offline.
All right, sounds good.
So let's get started. So the Coventry Town Council wishes to express a sincere congratulations and public recognition for Miranda Bouchard's exceptional effort in her art submission to the Alliance for Young Artists and Writers. Her digital art submission, titled "Woman of the Earth," won her a 2022 Gold Key Recognition at the Scholastic Art and Writing Awards. Miranda competed within Region-at-Large East Art, which is administered by the Alliance for Young Artists for Young Artists and Writers in New York City with the support of partners from around the country. The Coventry Town Council is proud of Miranda's efforts and hope to see her continue her artwork in the future. So thank you so much, Miranda. I was able to take a look at the, the work that you created, and I'm just wondering, can you share with us a little bit about what your inspiration was for submitting this piece?
Um, I'd love to. My inspiration is mainly nature itself, but adding a little sci-fi twist to it.
I think we can maybe put a copy of that, a link to the, the winning submission either on the town website, or we also have some of our counselor pages as well, so we can share that more broadly. So congratulations on this. We're very proud, and I will get this offline to you, a copy of the signed document.
Thank you.
Thank you, Miranda.
Thank you very much.
Agenda Item B7, Presentation and Discussion by the Coventry Economic Development Commission. This item is going to be tabled. I may, I would like a motion to table this item, please.
I'll make a motion to table as we don't have a quorum for tonight.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Roll call vote. Mrs. Shockley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lima?
Yes.
Ms. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon, five yeas, no nays. The motion is tabled to a future meeting. Agenda C1, Licenses and Discussion and Action. License for Coventry Nutrition LLC, 47 Sandy Bottom Road, Coventry. Reference pages in our packet, 37 to 38. Is Ms. O'Brien with us this evening?
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien, please come forward.
Can she come up?
She certainly can. We're going to first take a motion. We're first going to have a motion to approve the license, and then we'll ask you to make a couple of comments about your business, okay? May I have a motion to approve the license?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Discussion. Ms. O'Brien, please tell us a little bit about your business.
Uh, it's.
I'm sorry. Introduce yourself and the person who is with you, your partner.
My name is Trish O'Brien.
My name's April Leach. We're co-owners of Coventry Nutrition, hopefully soon. We're supposed to be taking over March 1st if all the licenses get approved. It's an established business already, and we're looking to just provide good nutrition to the community.
So tell us a little bit more about, is this a consulting business? Are you selling products?
So we are making meal replacement shakes, NRTs, and we have tablets and supplements to help support and weight loss management, maintaining weight, gaining weight, and just overall good energy.
And what are your experiences in this type of business?
I actually own a club in West Fork right now called Fire Devil Nutrition. We just opened in October of 2021, so we've been open a little over a year now. And I actually did work at Coventry Nutrition for two years prior to the new owner that is there now. She's actually moving out of state, and she's looking for somebody to take her place that is already involved in the business. And she's been with me at the club helping out the past year now, so I asked her to be my business partner.
So excellent. Thank you. Are there any other members of the council would like to ask any questions about this business and an application for a license? Okay, Mr. Marshon, any concerns or questions about this business license application?
None have been raised yet, but I don't have a report from the Police Department yet, so assuming that checks out, that would be the only qualifier.
Okay. No issues found.
Great, thank you.
Fine. Any other questions? All right, roll call vote. Mrs. Shockley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lima?
Yes.
Ms. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Yes, Mrs. Dixon, yes. Five yeas, no nays. The motion passes. Congratulations. Looking forward to having a very successful business.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, Agenda D, Resolutions and Discussion and Action. Resolution approving the purchase of two 2021 Ford police SUVs from CMG Colonial Municipal Group in the amount of $68,369.70 and outfitting from Global Public Safety in the amount of $23,634.03 for a total of $92,373.03. Insurance funds to be used in the amount of $75,798.21, and they remain to be funded in the amount of $16,205.52 from the account of 1010-5-610-43501-000. Reference pages are 39 to 48, and the resolution is on page 48. May I have a motion before we begin?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Discussion. Chief Heiss, tell us a little bit about this requested purchase.
So back in August and October of 2021, we had two vehicles that were totaled in motor vehicle accidents. And so the insurance paid out a certain amount to us. It's listed down below here as $34,515.10 for one vehicle, $41,283.11 for the other vehicle. And there was a balance left over of $16,205.52, and that was to be taken out of the town insurance claims to cover that remainder amount.
Members of the council, do you have any questions?
Thank you for that clarification in the resolution, that that is this specific money set aside for insurance claims. Fantastic. So insurance itself, money set aside for insurance claims. Perfect. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions by members of the council? Are you ready for a vote?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call vote. Mrs. Shockley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lima?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Ms. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon, yes. Five yeas, no nays. The motion passes. Congratulations, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, Agenda E, President Dixon Updates and Announcements. It's been a very busy time for our community members, yet we are receiving a respectable number of candidates who are interested in serving our community. We appreciate their interest. We always need more candidates, especially for the Parks and Recreation Commission. We encourage interested community members to apply. We also have an opening for a school committee member for District 1. Later in the meeting, the Board of Canvassers will provide a timetable for applying. Recall that we recently have had vacancies in districts for both Town Council and School Committee, and only one candidate has applied for each position. We need to encourage full participation for our elected positions. If you have any question on the role of the school committee, please contact Kathy Patno, Chairperson of the School Committee, or speak to me, as I was also a member of the School Committee from 2012 to 2018. So I encourage all to apply, and we'll hear more about the application process in just a few minutes. We also have openings for members of the Coventry Comprehensive Plan Citizens Advisory Committee. Only two to three people have applied thus far. We need representation from each district. Send your resume and email of intent to Mr. Russell Crossman or Mr. Ben Marshant as quickly as possible, because Mr. Crossman would like to activate that group very, very quickly. Agenda, next agenda item, Town Manager Updates. Reference pages 49 to 55. Mr. Marshon?
Thank you, Madam President. First, the update on the RFPs that we put out. For the wind turbine monitoring and flicker study, we did not get any proposals. I'd reached out to a dozen firms that are in the wind turbine industry, and I got a response from several of them by email saying that they declined to respond, that it wasn't precisely in their wheelhouse, or they'd worked with this project before and didn't feel like, they felt like they had a conflict. And so we don't have any proposals for that. This would be ideal, the ideal kind of project to maybe manufacture a solution in-house if we had an in-house engineer and time to work on it, because I don't think the technology's that complicated to set up a camera and a, and a battery station to catch sound and flicker, but we're, we don't have any proposals to go off right now.
So Mr. Marshon, I'd like to suggest that you extend the RFT time limit, and we'll still continue to look for some other potential firms that might apply while you pursue in-house development of this idea of doing the analysis, okay?
So we can, we can advertise a new.
I think we need to. We need to do that. We promised the residents that we would look and we would do an analysis for both flicker and noise, and we haven't been able to fulfill that promise yet. Not that we haven't tried, but we need to continue to, to make a gallant effort to do it, okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Do you think while still covering the issues that our residents have, there are any changes we should make to the RFP? Did any of the people you reached out to say it was something specific, or?
I didn't.
I just wanted to check.
Nothing specific, no. It's not listed here, but I did receive two proposals for the wastewater facilities plan update. I'll be sharing that with the sewer subcommittee in March and seeking their recommendation to the council, and so that'll be an upcoming meeting. We conducted during the month of January a community survey through the website, asking for citizens to give input on the use of the American Rescue Plan Act funding, and a copy of my summary report is in the packet, and I thought it was very interesting, the kinds of responses and comments we received. And that will be something that I think, now that we've completed the community engagement portion of the requirement for the expenditure of ARPA funds, we're ready to move into a council discussion about what the council would like to do.
Thank you. It was interesting to read all the open-ended comments that were made, quite a few comments about schools, but not as many specific selections of schools as one of the choices. So I found that was kind of interesting, but people did take time to write about the schools. Any other comments that members of the council would like to make about this report that Mr. Marshon has provided to us for the survey data?
I'm glad to see how many people did respond to the survey. In certain years, this is more people than have voted on things. I think using that code red system in every way possible has really been a benefit. Even something like yesterday's, to go off topic, yesterday's garbage pickup change. I'd say if it's a topic that affects a majority of the community, let's use it. So I'm glad that people did take the time to reach out, and we can put things in categories and at least have it help us start the discussion.
Thank you. Ms. Ludwig?
I just want to just comment on the schools piece as well. So I did see a number of people asking about school items here, and we didn't specifically have, have schools on the survey itself, so. Well, we, we didn't have as much about the schools as everything else municipal-wise, but I don't, I don't know if that's because people didn't totally understand that there were separate segregated school-issued COVID money to their side that they had a plan for use on. So I would, I would be interested if, if anyone who talked about that on the, the survey and provided that would reach out to us and just let us know if maybe that wasn't clear, that they had received their, they had received school-side specific funding COVID money separate from the town funds that we're talking about now. Now whether we choose to use some of that on school-related items is a separate discussion, but I just was curious about that myself, because there's, there, the people that I have talked with did not realize that, so I'm also wondering if that contributed to some of the handwritten notes about adding school in. It's more just a comment than, than anything.
Mr. Marshon, I noticed that town infrastructure had 225 responses, but then roads, bridges, and sidewalks had 166. So when we, when you think about town, town infrastructure, what are you thinking about? Because I thought that would include roads, bridges, and sidewalks plus other things. So some of these categories are a little overlapping.
Yeah, it was kind of based on how people responded to the survey, and there were separate questions on roads and bridges versus town infrastructure, like sewer buildings and parks and, and other built investments.
Okay. Any other comments?
I'm sorry, I was deep in reading some of these, so I might have missed your comment on this, Mr. Marshon, but what's, what is the timeline on now moving forward, given this information, and what's the next step?
So we have until, I believe, the end of 2026 to expend these funds in any of the appropriate categories, and I believe our first filing or report on the receipt and use of these funds is due in April, where we have to do an initial baseline kind of report, sign up, register. But anytime now going forward, it's really the town council's prerogative to develop a plan for how to expend these funds in that timeframe.
Okay, thank you.
So that would probably be a discussion item on a future agenda.
Ms. LeBlanc?
Just a quick comment here. I know I emailed you Ben with a suggestion, and it was just on the town's website, I would like a kind of a running tally of all the funds that we've received to date, and then, I don't, I mean, I don't care if it's $1,000 or if it's $100,000. I want it listed on that running tally of where these funds went, just for complete transparency for taxpayers.
Yes, we'll get that up there.
Thank you.
Thank you for that suggestion, Mr. LeBlanc. Excellent. Any other comments? All right, move forward. Agenda E4, Update by the Board of Canvassers.
Skip three.
Did I skip three?
Kevin McGee.
Oh, yes. Thank you. How could I forget you, Kevin? I think it's because, it's because we always have you at the end of the meeting, and we put you a little bit earlier.
We tried.
Yes, we tried. I'm sorry, Board of Canvassers, we have Mr. McGee coming next.
Sorry.
Sorry. We're so used to him coming at the end of the meeting. I asked Mr. Marshon to invite Mr. McGee to speak this evening so that he could give us an update on the winter storm from January 29, 2022, an update on the fleet of trucks after the storm, what was their condition, and an update on comments received from residents about the winter storm. And Mr. McGee always comes with a very nicely-prepared report for us. Good evening.
Prepared this report basically just to summarize what happened and how we dealt with it. If you don't mind, I'll read it, so it's in the record. Blizzard Keenan was one of the most severe snow events in decades, leaving the town with an average of 22 inches of snowfall. The storm began on January 29, 2022, and finished on January 30, 2022. A parking ban was instituted during that period, and there were periods of complete whiteout where the roads, north of the sides of the roads were, were not discernible. We had 50 to 60 mile an hour winds that we would plow the roads, and within an hour, it would look like it wasn't even touched. By Monday on January 31, 2022, our crews went out to assess any roads that may have been missed or needed additional attention. PW started the storm with 26 frontline trucks and with two floating trucks to assist where needed. The size and duration of the storm had a serious effect on our snow fleet. During the storm, 16 trucks went out of service, which seriously affected our level of service to the residents. The crew was demoralized that the equipment could not stay in service throughout the storm. As of this date today, there are still six trucks out of service awaiting park deliveries. Due to the amount of snowfall, large piles of snow accumulated at intersections, bus stops, and at the end of cul-de-sacs. On Monday, this office requested that the Town Council Chairperson issue an emergency declaration for two purposes. The first, the ability to file for reimbursement from FEMA, and secondly, the ability to utilize emergency contractor list. After consultation with the Town Manager, the emergency contractor list was utilized from February 1, 2022 through February 3, 2022. Three contractors responded to our request to move snow. We were able to contract for one backhoe loader, three front-end loaders, three tri-axle dump trucks, and three 10-wheeler dump trucks. During this period, there were two town trucks. During this period, there were two town trucks dispatched with each of the contracted crews. The town also had two strike teams dispatched at the same time, loader, backhoe, dump trucks to clean the affected areas. Parks and Recreation Director Ms. Rena Blumenthal agreed to allow DPW to stockpile snow on the lower level of the Foster Field parking area. And developer John Assalone allows the stockpiling of snow on his property behind the Dunkin' Donuts at Ohio Cabinet. The cost of the snow event is as, is as follows, which we have applied for FEMA for reimbursement of this declared disaster. Trucks plowing standards $45,476. Employees overtime $38,577. Emergency contractors $19,663. 750 tons of salt at $67 for $50,250. Fuel costs $2,475 and meals during the storms was $269. We purchased meatballs and pasta and some soup for the guys in between their, their workday for a total of $156,714.50. As the cleaning of the snow was concluded on February 3rd, the town had to deal with an ice storm that followed a day long deluge of rain, still with a depleted fleet of equipment. There were several residents who voiced their displeasure with comments like, I have no more snow, I have more snow on my side of the road than my neighbor. And I just finished shoveling my driveway and purposely widened the road and put more snow back on my driveway. However, we also had, as it, as you can see, attached pages of people from our Facebook pages congratulating us for the work that was done. So there's always bad, we can't please everybody, but yet there were people that were appreciative. During that time, we also had put in our post that any first responder or somebody that worked at a hospital, they needed help getting out, they get to the hospital, please contact us. We put that on our website. We actually assisted 11 different residents for that. We also received calls from Cumberland in Providence, asking us that we'd help them get to work also. We had to tell them it was only for Coventry residents. We also had those comments as indicated from the telephone calls and Facebook posts. DPW also had the assistance of Parks and Recreation Department, which handled portions of the streets behind the former police station. And the town should be very appreciative of the efforts of our DPW employees. I know I am proud of their efforts. They did, they did a good job for what they had to work with. And we will continue every storm since we were going out. In the last 21 days, we've had three events that we've been out for. So the most recently a dusting two inches ended up being 10 inches. So.
How is your budget holding up these days?
We are a little over on salt, but we are under in sand. So I think we're going to balance hopefully there. We have 500 tons being delivered today and tomorrow. We still have four weeks of winter left. And the overtime is just a little bit over, but right now the department is still three, 3% under budget as of today.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And what about all these trucks that broke down? Tell us more about that.
Well, it's, it's not a story you haven't heard from me in the past. I mean, we have, we are making progress and I have to applaud this council for the efforts they are making. But the three larger dump trucks that we were approved to purchase, we did put the order in, in August and we're expecting them in June. Because of whatever the chip shortages of parts, we can't get them any sooner. The smaller vehicles are being, are being replaced and we have those done. We still have a one ton dump truck that didn't even have a build order as of the end of December. So that'll be sometime. We still have an aging fleet. I know you're making efforts to, to replace weekend. None of these could be, could be planned. The amount of snow and how much snow we had to push. If we continue having this amount of snow, our fleet is undersized for moving that type of snow. We have six wheelers and one tons and pickup trucks trying to plow roads. If we're going to continue to get this type of downfall, and I'm not saying that we are, but we need to address that. If this is going to happen more than two or three times in the next couple of years, we need to upgrade to more of the 10 wheeler sized trucks that we can push the snow back with. So, but today we're making do. Looks like we have six trucks that are still waiting and I expect by the end of this week, we'll have them all back online.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions or questions by members of the council on Ms. Ludwig?
So Director McGee, thank you for putting everything together here for us. Just a couple, couple of things. So firstly, when we applied to FEMA, what's, what's the likelihood of any type of reimbursement there? Is there a sense of?
If this, if the state and the county make, meet the threshold that is set up by FEMA, then we could get reimbursed two, three, four years from now. If they, we don't make the threshold, then this is all on the backs of the taxpayers.
Okay. I did want to comment, I did not realize that we were down 16 trucks until.
During the storm.
Yeah, until afterwards. So I, I think there most likely needs to be a reasonable expectation of residents of what we can accomplish. So I'm, I'm glad that we are going over all of this. I thought, I thought your team did wonderful. I, I didn't know that you were down 16 trucks. I, I did get a question from a resident about why, why are we using tax? And I didn't, it wasn't to be personally, it was on a, a neighborhood page about, but I'm on the page, so it's, of course it's coming to me. So, you know, why are the, why are the, why are the trucks out there moving the snow from one place to another? And, you know, questions like that. So I think I've seen over the last year, kind of an uptick in the communications on this Facebook page from your, your group. I think that's extremely helpful for residents to understand kind of what you're doing and, you know, because they, this is one of the groups that they see right in front of them. You're in their neighborhood. So I, I think that transparency, transparency has been very good.
It's all about safety. I mean, we have intersections that are blocked with snow, people can't see on our corners. Bus stops are blocked, children have to stand on the roads and they end up a lot of, a lot of cul-de-sacs. We had so much snow pushed there, blocking people's houses and drainage. So we had to cut that down so that we could keep the drainage so we don't have any additional flooding and also that allow the rain in, in the weather to start melting it. So we don't have that continuing. We still, at that point, had still had, you know, seven, eight weeks of winter left. So.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, so thank you as well.
Mrs. Shopley?
Sorry about that, Mr. Dixon. I got a lot of, I saw a lot of positive feedback. It was actually really great. Without getting too contentious, I did notice some neighbors managing the expectations of their other neighbors as well. But I do wonder, just because you were talking about your, where you are in budget, are you including this $156,000 when you say you're coming in under budget? Or is there an expectation that? Can you factor in an expectation, I should say, and this probably is more for Ms. Mills, that we may get a reimbursement? Or is this just coming from our current budget and we're still 3% under?
Well, we have to pay everything upfront from our budget. The employees and overtime was something that was already budgeted in our, you know, operating budget.
Great.
And some of the salt was there also, but we are, we are now, as of today, before the, the delivery that we had, we were $12,000 over budget in salt, but I'm $40,000 under budget in sand. So it will balance.
Great. So it sounds like you are factoring this, these funds in on page two here.
I'm trying.
Okay, perfect. Thanks.
Which is not over yet.
But by, by factoring, we're not counting on getting it.
Right, exactly. Perfect.
And I, I believe the, the FEMA threshold is 1.8 million. That has to be the cost of the storm statewide. And for 39 cities and towns, if everyone had to do a similar workload as us, we'll be fine and we'll get it. Based on that simple math, but we'll see.
You've got quite the footprint.
Quick question. I don't, I don't know if this is for Mr. Marshon or Mr. McGee. When it comes to, the snowstorm was actually pretty sizable, 22 inches. Who's responsible for clearing around fire hydrants? Is it the property owner or is it the town?
Fire department.
Oh, it is the fire department. Okay.
And it's enough crews for that.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. McGee. I appreciate you giving us this update. I, I did ask if we could put you on the agenda because I think people need to understand the condition of our fleet, all the work that needed to be done during this last storm and then succeeding storms after that. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next agenda item is E4 update by the Board of Canvassers. I thought that the public and the town council would like an update on the election timetable for school committee member for District One. And also have a little more information about what's happening regarding local redistricting. So please introduce yourself to us.
I'm Bill Marcot, Chairman of Coventry Board of Canvassers. Laurie Anderson is the clerk.
Could you put down the microphone just a wee bit? Thank you.
Sure. We're here tonight for the two different topics. We have the special election for school committee District One. And secondly, the redistricting of Town of Coventry. Laurie, I think is giving you some information. The first one we'll go over will be the special election.
More or less self-explanatory, I'm the calendar for the election weekend. It's a Title 17. So we have to go by what the Board of Elections. It's a state run election. So it is what it says here that we have to follow. So declarations will come on the 24th and 25th, and then we'll know from there how many candidates we have. You can take it from there to see, but we can't have the election until May 3rd. Nope, it's a state run. Nothing we can do.
And do you know how many polling places there will be?
There'll be two.
Two?
One on each side of the town, thinking Maplewood Baptist Church and St. Francis Church on this side. One's at the end of Hockney Hill, one at the opposite end of Hockney Hill.
Well, St. Francis Church is off 117.
Yes.
So that's at the other end of District One. That's what you're saying, right?
Yes.
Okay, fine.
Yes.
Okay. Any questions, members of the council? I was hoping that this would be a little quicker. And with, you know, the, the taxpayers wouldn't have to wait so long for representation, but as you said, it's a state run election.
It's a Title 17. It's a state election. We have no choice. We can't make the rules on this.
Okay. So thank, thank you very much. We appreciate that update.
Okay.
And Mr. Marcot?
Did you have a question?
Well, you're going, you have the next topic, right? Oh, okay.
Okay, the redistricting?
Yes.
Okay, that's something that is done every 10 years after the census has been done. And right now the state, you'll see the calendar down the bottom of that paper that, that's the email I get every week from the Secretary of State's office stating what's going on and where. And you can see that we cannot do anything until after they have, the state has made their lines. Oh, I have my paper. Oh, there it is. Yeah, February is general assembly. And then February to early April is the cities and towns who draw their lines. And then April, it should all be done and ready to go in the CVRS system, which is a state system again.
So Ms. Anderson, could you explain to us when it says cities and towns draw ward district precinct lines? What is the role of the town council in this particular action item?
Nothing.
Nothing?
It's something that you can be included, but it doesn't mean that what, we hire a firm.
Okay.
Kim Bryce with Election Data Services. And he also does it for the state. So that's why we carry over with him because he's already done the majority and we've had him in the past. And he will come in, he will meet with our board members. And if you want to be there, I can't see why you can't be. But say wise, it's all our numbers. It's about numbers of how many can go into the district.
Okay, so this is handled by your consultant, correct?
Yes.
And then the consultant makes recommendations to the Board of Canvassers?
Yes.
And at, at what point is the town council or the public made aware of the recommendations?
Soon as I get the meeting date, I will let you know.
Fine, that would be great. Let Mr. Marshon know and then he can notify the rest of the council members. That would be wonderful. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. LeBlanc?
So does the Board of Canvassers have any public meetings that, where the public can attend and, and listen to any recommendations from the third party?
No.
Okay.
We never have in the past. It's, like I said, it's all based on numbers. So it's not like you can recommend that they do this or that. It's what we have to do, go by the guidelines.
Understood. But who, who actually is drawing the lines?
It will be Kim Bryce and Ryan Taylor from election, yeah, Election Data Services.
And, and they have no input from the Board of Canvassers on how, how the, the line should be drawn?
You know, we are going to be, we're going to meet with them and they're going to give their recommendations. And like I said, when we do that, yeah, well, right, the number of voters for a district. And you can be there if you'd like to hear them presentation.
I'm not just saying just me, I'm saying the public as well, just so that they can actually hear that conversation about how they're going to be drawn.
I have only been through one other and it happened 10 years ago. I cannot recall, but they never did.
But just, not, just because they didn't do it in the past doesn't mean we can't do it now, though.
Well, maybe Nick can. We could ask Nick if, do you know anything in the law that states?
What if, what if the council actually requested be a public question? And I mean, a public meeting.
Well, the, the question is, the Board of Canvassers meets and they are a public appointed group. So I'm assuming that when they meet, it is a public meeting and not a public meeting. And that means that any member of the public may attend to at least listen in and perhaps make public comment. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, because at some point, the board does vote to accept the, the newly drawn lines, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that would be a public meeting that somebody could attend. Yeah.
Well, that's like I said, you guys are welcome to.
They notice, they notice some, all their meetings anyway, that the Board of Canvassers does, certainly this one, where they're going to be reviewing and perhaps even voting on the new voting districts. That will be very important. I would think, you know, members of the council would be entitled to attend.
Of course.
Get a look at the maps before. But ultimately the vote is the Board of Canvassers. It's in the charter. And we checked the minutes from 10 years ago. The town council did not vote on it. Only the Board of Canvassers did.
And I'm not saying I want to vote on it. All I'm saying is I want it to be open, transparent, and I want the, the discussion and, and the discussion from the Board of Canvassers on where the, the map should be drawn, the line should be drawn. I think that's extremely important to be just openly transparent about it. That's all.
I, I only mentioned it because I wasn't sure. Because the only experience I had was the general assembly votes on their own districts. They're the only body I know of in the state that does it, but I wanted to check. The, the charter was pretty clear, but we also checked the minutes, thanks to the town clerk's office. They were able to get them from 10 years ago. So I didn't think you were insinuating anything about that.
Just throwing it out there. Just wanted to be open and transparent. That's all. Exactly.
Because it's an open meeting and you posted publicly, could the town maybe on this particular meeting that's maybe people are going to be a little more engaged in, post it as well, like put it on our Facebook and try to put it out there to the public a bit? And in a few different ways. Yeah, I know, but people don't look. Let's try to help them, help them be interested if we possibly can.
Right. You know, we do what we can, you know. And I can even post it in the Coventry reminder if that's advertised in. So I can meet and deal with that too.
That's a, that's a good idea. Thank you.
Yes. Okay.
Okay, thank you so much.
All right. Thank you.
Bye. Good night. Agenda item F, a Town of Coventry and Green Library proposed memorandum of agreement, reference pages 56 to 58. May I have a motion to approve the change to the memorandum?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion. Who is here to represent the Green Association? Is it Mr. Underhill? I know, I know. It's Mr. Underwood. How could I forget, Mr. Underwood? Yes. Would you like to introduce the other members you have with you?
Glenn Underwood, 818 Hopkins Hall Road, Green Public Library Association, President. And from the town side, John Ball, President of the Board of Trustees, and Megan Weed, our Town of Coventry Library Director. The agreement, and I think you all have a copy of it there, was signed in 2010. And basically the partnership has worked extremely well between the Green Public Library Association, which owns the building, and the Town of Coventry, which has been providing library services as a branch out in Western Coventry. So been 12 years and we really haven't had any reason to change the agreement until now we're running into a. until now we're running into a situation where the association can no longer afford all of the expenses of running the library. So we're looking to share some of the operating expenses with the town. The building is used mostly for the library services, but is used for other community activities. Prior to COVID, we had Cub Scouts, Boy Scouts, other town meetings and gatherings there. And we still plan to do that after we get through some of the COVID issues. But we feel it's time that, or asking or requesting the council to amend the agreement to cost share the electricity and the heat with the association group. So we continue this successful partnership. And our estimated cost for a full year to the town portion will be approximately about $5,000, right in that range, which I think Megan has budgeted for this upcoming year. We're looking to start this in March, though, and we, you know, since we've still got two months of heating and a couple of months of electricity to cost share, to cost the town a couple of thousand dollars just to finish out the rest of the year if you do approve this agreement, which I, once again, will defer to Megan. I think that we can easily afford that in the town library's budget, operating budget that we're under for this year.
So Mr. Underwood, is the only change to this agreement on the section you, we have underlined here or highlighted, the sharing of the heating bill and the electric bill?
Yeah.
Any other changes?
No, no other changes. I don't think, you know, this has worked extremely well for 12 years. You haven't heard us before the group prior to this. And I certainly will defer to John and Megan on the town side to say that it's done extremely well for both, both sides. It gives the town a great opportunity to provide library services in the western end, which of course, this is the big town, so it's nice to have a branch out for people out in Western Coventry.
I would like to ask one question. This is on Section 12. It said that the Coventry Public Library is currently governed by a seven board, seven-member board of trustees appointed by the Coventry Town Council. We knew about that. When I read upon the next vacancy of a trustee's seat on the board, an association representative shall be considered for appointment to the board by the town council. I don't think we ever did that. I don't think we ever were aware of that. Have we done that?
Yes, I was the person that was appointed at the, that. So I'm the representative.
Oh, you are?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
I fill that role.
Oh, I did not realize that. Okay, so what is your role then to bring back the?
So it's more that that position on the, on the board, on the town board is to keep the interaction between the two organizations working smoothly. So that way, there's feedback between the two. If there's an issue prior to Megan Lin would, you know, work with through me as getting stuff done out there and vice versa. So that was, this was, I think, Nick, you were probably involved in this original agreement in 2010, I think.
I was not.
Oh, okay, all right, so. But that's, that was what they, the council at that point adopted to keep a partnership.
Okay, excellent. Any questions by members of the council?
I'm assuming it's going to be updated for signing.
Yeah, it has to be updated for signing because it has Mr. Hoover's name on it and Mr. Spear's name on it. So this has to be, this has to be updated. Mr. Marshon?
So Solicitor Goram did provide me with an updated version, not quite in this format, because he thought it was a proposal that I was putting forward. Didn't realize that this was coming from the Green Association. And so we can, we can do that based on the council's action tonight.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Ludwig?
Thank you for joining us. I just had a couple of questions. So so is the Green Library, is that owned, is it by the town or is it owned?
It's owned by the association.
Yeah, so the Green Library was the last of the free libraries in the Town of Coventry that was able to operate by itself. The Anthony and Summit all had closed down and merged and ended up being what we have here. And then in 2010, we used to get a town grant, the association, to run our own library services out there. And we had a librarian and kept our own books and everything and had our own book collection. But in 2010, the Town of Coventry cut all the funding for nonprofit groups. And so with that $10,000 loss to our operations, we weren't able, weren't going to be able to continue as a library out there. But the council felt very important, that it was very important to keep funding green. And they said, well, what else can we do? So the Len Blanchett, Ray Spear, a few others along with the association said, why don't we try a partnership? And we'll provide the library services because they, you know, we've always wanted to expand the library. So without having to build another building or build a larger library here, we were able to add space out in Western Coventry for programming and other, you know, library services. And we do, you know, circulate books, we have a collection. I don't know whether you've been out to, to the Green. If you haven't, certainly I know Anne and a few others have been there. It's a, it's a very nice building. So the association owns the building and we share it as, so we can still, that's why the agreement was more, instead of like a flat-out rental fee that you just rent the whole, the town rents the whole building. It was more of a partnership agreement that the library service would, would take place out there and the association would pay the cost of maintaining the building. And so that's where we're at now is that we just, the association just can't continue on doing that.
So when you say that, so I have not been to the Green Library. So is it that we have town employees working there?
Yep, you're, they all work for, for the Town of Coventry, the employees there. They run the, it's like a real library operation there. Where to go out there.
Okay. So one of my daughters just had to get an Ablaken book transferred over from Green Library. So, so I know about that. And I also know about, we had, we were looking at meeting spaces for strategic planning. The Green Public Library was suggested as a possible location when we were looking at places. So I just wanted to know a little bit more about the building.
Yeah, we've, we've hosted several events. We've had a police event out there when the residents were asking police questions. It serves a great purpose for the entire town besides library. And other groups, we've been able to host, like, you know, like I say, the scouts. And they have all been able to use that building. The association just, you know, works them rent-free, you know, and they come back and hopefully support us at fundraisers in various things to help offset some of the costs.
Question, Mr. LeBlanc?
For any given year, you can take 2021, the budget. How much of the budget is paid for by the association and how much is paid for by the town in dollar figures?
Well, Megan can probably answer the library staffing and the books and all that. That's all, all covered by the town. Our, our association, the annual heating bill and electricity and utilities is about 6,000. Insurance is a little bit over 4,000, so then maintenance. So right about 12 to 15 is the total budget of the building during, I mean, you know, depending upon what the heat costs are. But we don't, so the town handles all the, the rest of the stuff, the books and.
But now the town's picking up some additional on the heat and the electricity.
Yeah, we're going to cost share, that we're proposing to cost share.
Understood. Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Shockley? What was the association's source of funding? So how were you getting money and what's changed?
So, well, what's, what's changed, two things is costs, as we know, are going up faster than we can raise money. We have a trust fund that provides dividend income, but it's not growing as fast as what our costs are certainly. And other maintenance things are obviously, you know, adding costs. So the bigger thing is, is two years without a lot of additional fundraising has been very difficult. A lot of the older people that used to support the library have passed on financially support the library with donations and various things. And so that's, that's the biggest driving factor. It's really, if we weren't supporting the town library services there, we'd probably mothball the building for the winter, you know, and not run, you know, heating costs and utilities and things like that. So, which I don't think would be a great idea. I think it's doing really well for providing services out there. But it's just costs. I mean, it's a smaller group of people and volunteers are few and far between, as we all know, as we're trying to find people and stuff. And it's, it's really difficult to fundraise when you don't have a huge base of people. That's, that's the challenges we're facing.
Other questions? Ms. Ludwig?
So I'm just wondering, how, how, how are the utilities paid right now? So like on the 75%, will you send, will you send the bill, I guess, to the town?
Yeah, so we'll, we'll, we'll pay the invoice and send the town for reimbursement, the actual invoice and copy with the proration amount right on it. So there'll be a paper trail of the electric and the heating cost.
Okay, and I'm just wondering, is it, is it consistently that, you know, $6,000 a year? Because the only thing that I would be nervous about is, okay, say it jumps to like $15,000 a year. So I'm just wondering if we should consider some sort of review, you know, to be reviewed to make sure that this part of the agreement is, is good for like five years or something? And then we, we have you come back to the council or put a cap or something or?
I think the thing that, you know, this agreement can be amended anytime. I think that'd be probably more up to Megan and her budget side and the Town Library Board to say, you know, this, this isn't working for us. We're putting too much money out there, you know, and certainly the council oversees the entire town line for budget when it goes through budget approval, but.
Yeah, I don't, you know, I don't imagine it, you know, getting $20,000. But we've seen some crazy things, so I, I don't know. I just want to make sure there's something in place so that, you know, God forbid, this number goes up to 15,000 or something. It just wasn't what we were anticipating, that there's some sort of oversight that you can bring it back and say, hey, we need to reevaluate.
I, I think, you know, it's really amending the agreement to give us the ability to help out with the utilities. And like year to year, like if it was not sustainable anymore, we would have to renegotiate the agreement, maybe, you know, like, it, it just comes down to the budget, fitting it to our budget. If it went up $15,000, I don't know that we could actually support that anymore. So maybe we would have to rethink the whole agreement. But it's just giving us the ability to be able to contribute to the utilities. You know, I haven't been here since when this agreement was signed, but I've been here for the past seven years and I've seen what a good partnership it is with the library. And I do think it's a valuable service that is brought out that way. We do a lot of programming, more programming than we do here because we don't have space. It was sort of, that and that. So it is, you know, a good partnership. So I, and because the, the building is being used mostly for library programs, it makes sense to me that we would pick up the utilities or, you know, some of the utilities.
Thank you. Well, we rely, we rely on you to be accountable to the town council to keep us apprised of what changes there may be in these costs. Because paragraph 13 says that the initial agreement was for two years, could be renewed automatically for an additional one-year term. So, I mean, we would have no oversight as to what's going on. And then either party may terminate the agreement at any time following six months prior to written notice. So you would be the person who would be seeing these bills, is that correct? Okay, so we rely on you to, to keep us up to date on what's happening.
Listed in the budget, so you would, you would see that in the budget.
Do you have a separate line item for this, the library?
Not yet, but we will.
Oh, you will, okay. Ms. Mills?
Yes, I, can I, can I just add if you, if you'd like, because we're in the process of formulating a new budget? We could, we could break out the two pieces of the budget, the funding for the Green Library versus here. So that's easily doable if you want to, and so you don't have to ask how the costs are. We can actually break it up. You want me to do that?
Yes, that would be excellent agreement by members of the council. That sounds like a great idea. Thank you, Ms. Mills.
You're welcome.
That way you don't have to be communicating with us all the time because she'll have it right in her budget. So that's good, excellent. Okay, thank you, Mr. Underwood. Mr. Ball, would you like to make any comments?
I would just like to say that we're very pleased and proud that the Green Library is part of the Coventry Library System. Very pleased and very cooperative. And it's more than a library there, it's like a community center, too. And I'm very happy that Glenn is on the Board of Trustees and I've been a member myself for at least 30 years.
I think that means you.
Getting near the end of the line.
Maybe next, maybe next month you need a certificate of recognition. We'll, we'll put you on the list.
No, I'm not looking for anything.
Well, it's only a piece, it's only, it's only a piece of paper. It's only a piece of paper. We'll arrange it, Mr. Ball.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Okay, are we ready for a vote?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a second. Roll call vote to approve the proposed memorandum of agreement. Reference pages 56 to 58. Mrs. Shockley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lima?
Yes.
Ms. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon, yes, five ayes, no nays. Thank you, the motion passes. Thank you very much. Item Agenda F2, vote on strategic plan for the Town of Coventry. You should have received two strategic plan documents. One is labeled version one and one is labeled version two. First of all, I would like a motion to approve version number two, then a second, and then we will have a discussion about the differences between these two versions. So may I have a motion to approve version number two, which was distributed to you on January 24th? I'll make a motion. Thank you, may I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, thank you. Discussion. The plan that was last discussed at a town council meeting, the plan was last discussed at a town council meeting on January 11th and January 24th. The council has the meeting minutes for January 24th in its packet for tonight that has feedback from the council when we have the discussion on the 24th. In the January 24th packet, we had two versions of the January 11 strategic plan. So you should have received both versions and one is should be labeled version one and version two. These are the differences. In version two, the vision statement comes first and the mission second. Version number two and vision number one, there are organizational values and there were recommendations that those values should have definitions, otherwise they should not be listed. In the discussion, in version two and version one, priority number one, number four, Mr. Shockley recommended that we remove the word "only." In version number two and version number one, Jamie, Mr. LeBlanc, recommended the addition of number six under number one, file the town's financial statements on a timely basis. He asked for that to be included. In version number two, priority three, there is a removal of the word "built out" before "facilities." And in version number two, the outcome was, was different. The outcome in version two was.
I'm having a really hard time following.
Do you have version number one?
Am I missing, am I missing the addition of number six in version one?
Well, because nothing has changed in these. You're just saying what we talked about changing?
No, no, version two has the changes.
Version, version, no, it's not. Okay.
Priority one, it does not have number six.
Okay, the version number two has some of the changes that were recommended at the January 11th meeting and they have been incorporated. They were incorporated into version two. In addition to that, when we had the discussion on January 24th, there were recommendations made. Mr. Shockley recommended that the word "only" be removed from, let me see, version, priority one, number four. Okay, Mr. LeBlanc recommended that the addition of number six, file the town's financial statements on a timely basis.
Right, no, it's not.
Because these items.
That's because he recommended at January 24th.
So Anne had given a second version of the strategic plan. That's version two. And we've looked at both of them at the last meeting.
January 24th.
January 24th. Any other change she's mentioning, it's not in it. She's just saying those are other things, like we're voting on version two with the changes she's mentioning.
What, what we're going to do?
Which is why it's hard to.
Okay, okay. What, what we're going to?
So if I can clarify, following the last discussion, I didn't know what to do with all the comments that were thrown out there because there was no indication of a consensus. all the comments that were thrown out there because there was no indication of a consensus or agreement or of what should be included and what should not be included. And so what I would ask is any of the suggestions that were raised, that there be an acknowledgement that yes, we will make that change or no, we will not make that change and how you want the final product to look like. So that's why, you know, I, I'm looking to the council to kind of give their consensus about what the final product should look like. And after the last meeting, I just didn't know if that was just one person's opinion or five people's opinion. And so I, I didn't do anything. And so that's why President Dixon's trying to raise that as a, a point of acknowledgement that these were raised at the last meeting, but no decision was made, no direction was given.
Okay. So if you look at, thank you, Mr. Marshawn. If you look at version number two, we have a motion to accept version number two. If you also want to include the comments, if you agree that were made at January 24th, Mr. LeBlanc's comment about adding an additional statement, Mr. Shockley's comment about adding or removing the word only, and my comment regarding that we should not have a list of organizational values for which there are no definitions in there, then we can have an amendment to version number two and we can make the changes that were recommended by members of January 24th.
And those were the, those were the only three? Adding definitions, taking out the word only and number four of priority one and adding number six timely financial statements to priority one? Or are there more?
No, that had already been changed. Yes. The only three based on the meeting minutes which you have in your packet this evening, which is the January 24th meeting minutes. I went through the meeting minutes and I looked at the changes that made it into the meeting minutes, the changes that were recommended, one by you, one by Mr. LeBlanc and one by me. So if you approve of those recommendations that three members of the council made, then we have a motion to accept version number two, but we would need an amendment to version number two, which would incorporate the changes that were recommended by each of the three members of the council. Okay. Mrs. Shockley?
If we're continuing discussion, I don't have a problem with adding definitions to the organizational values, but I do want this document to be easy to read. And so if we were going to do that, I wouldn't want to change the layout of the document. I would simply want to add those definitions to the end of the document. So keep page one looking like it is with just the list of organizational values so that someone could pick this up and not feel like the first three pages were all definitions of words.
Perfect. Okay. So that's a one recommendation. The second recommendation is Mrs. Shockley recommended for priority number one, number four, that the word only be removed. Do we have consensus that that makes sense to do that? Yes. Okay. So we'll say, so what we'll say is what makes, we'll have consensus on these. We'll then instruct Mr. Marshawn to make those changes and come back to us with the amended version two, which we will vote on at the next meeting. Does that make sense? Okay. The next one is Jamie recommended the addition of number six. I think it was priority one. He recommended file the town's financial statements on a timely basis. Do we have consensus that that makes sense?
Yes. Yes. That makes, oh, perfect sense.
And then what you really do need to do, if you could spend one moment, the outcome in version one and two are different. So would you just look at the outcome from version one and two at the end of the document to see which one you like better?
They all have their own outcome. So for which?
For which priority?
Yes, it was priority three, number, outcome for priority three. One of them says, the town will achieve the sustainability of a sound base of a well-maintained infrastructure from which to deliver services. And the other one says the town will achieve the sustainability of a healthy infrastructure base from which to deliver services. Which one makes more sense to people here? Version one or version two? This is the outcome for.
I have no real skin in this game on that question.
They both, they both are, are so high level. A sound, what is a sound base?
They're both a little wordy.
So, so this is the challenge I struggle with, with trying to communicate clearly and concisely without using too many words. And sometimes fewer words are more ambiguous. But the idea is that if we're on top of our infrastructure, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. So when you stay ahead of the game, it costs you less and it's more sustainable. But if you fall behind on your infrastructure, like we have with our fleet maintenance, we're spending all our money on repairs and not having the trucks out on the road plowing snow. So how to convey that idea that by being responsible and proactive in our management of infrastructure, we can keep the costs down and make it more affordable. That's, that's the idea that I'm trying to get to with. We can achieve financial sustainability of our infrastructure if we keep it healthy, if we keep it fresh.
So I actually like the one from version one more. I think it's easier to read, but I do like the word well-maintained because I feel as if that's a large portion of what is going to keep the infrastructure healthy. So could we do the town will achieve the sustainability of a healthy, well-maintained infrastructure base from which to deliver services?
We can do that. And I also would suggest maybe take out healthy because I'm not even sure what healthy.
That's what I liked. But like I said, this isn't my hill to die on. So.
I wouldn't, the way these, both of these are written, I wouldn't be able to sit down with the resident without them asking me six more questions about what this even means. So.
So if we go, if we go back to the goal of improving the condition, maintenance, service capacity and sustainability of all town infrastructure investments, the goal is clear, right? So if you achieve that goal, what is your outcome?
So can we just say rather than of a sound base, the town will achieve sustainability through well-maintained infrastructure? Which will deliver us, deliver. Just from well-maintained infrastructure.
Period.
Period. So the town will achieve sustain, so take out the, the town will achieve sustainability through well-maintained infrastructure. I just, I don't know how I'm supposed to.
I think that gets it.
It's, it's simple enough. Yeah. Okay.
If that, if that's okay. I'm open to additional ideas, but right now.
Consensus on that revision that Ms. Ludwig has suggested. Okay. All right. Mr. Marshawn, you now have some consensus from the group. So if you can come back with version number three, we'll vote on it. We probably won't have time to vote on, on the 28th. It'll be the first meeting in March.
I think if you're agreed on it, we have the language. And if you agreed with the amendments, you can vote now.
So read, just read the outcome one more time. Oh.
I would just, I think the next step would be to make a motion to accept.
The amendment.
The amendment, the amended ver, the amendments to version two.
So then, so we need a motion?
I'll second the, uh, motion on the amendments to version two.
And just to repeat what the amendments are, organizational values would be at the end of the document in some type of glossary with definitions. The word only will be removed from priority one, number four. We will have the addition of number six, I believe in priority one, which will say file the town's financial statements on a timely basis. And the outcome, Ms. Ludwig is going to repeat what she said for priority three will be the town will achieve sustainability through well-maintained infrastructure. Okay. May I have a motion to approve the amended motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. That, that's just the amendments. Okay. The vote, Mrs. Shockley, this is for the amendments.
Yes.
Mrs. Lima?
Yes.
Ms. Ludwig?
Yes.
Ms. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon? Yes. Okay. Now we will have a motion to approve the amended version number.
We don't need a motion now. We can just go to the main vote.
We just do the main vote?
Yep.
Well, the main vote is.
I think we already made a motion.
We already did the motion in second to introduce it. We amended, we amended, motion to accept the amendments and now we're back to the main motion, which has already been made. So now it's.
Typically, the motion is.
Under motions.
Wait a minute. Mr. Barham?
Typically, the motion is now we'll vote on the.
Amended motion.
Yeah. We don't need a motion in second. Yeah.
Right.
Okay. So we now need a motion to vote on the plan as amended, the strategic plan as amended. Yes. And a second.
We don't.
Mr. Barham recommended we.
No, he's saying now we're at the vote. We already motioned second.
Okay. Mrs. Shockley?
Yes.
You know what you're talking about?
Yes. Okay. Mrs. Lima?
Yes.
Ms. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Present, I mean, yes.
How come I'm the only one who got asked if I knew what I was talking about?
Because you were sitting next to me. I believe it was five yes and no nays with Mr. Garin weighing in and Mr. Marshawn making. So, okay, we now have a strategic plan. Mr. Marshawn?
Thank you.
Sent us the amended, amended, amended version. Thank you very much. Okay. We need a motion to table agenda item F3.
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Mrs. Shockley? Yes. Mrs. Lima?
Yes.
Ms. Ludwig?
Yes.
Ms. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon?
Yes.
Five yes, no nays. The motion passes to table that agenda item. We're now at agenda G, public comment. Members of the public, if you'd like to make a statement, please raise your hand on Zoom. There were two members here in the, in the room with us. Thank you for waiting it out the whole evening. If you'd like to make a statement, if you're on Zoom, please raise your hand. We recognize. And Mr. Horton, could you please let that person in, please? Please state your name and your address, please. Welcome, Mr. Manier.
Thank you. Larry Manier, 170 Richardson Road. I thought you might be a little interested in a preview of the redistricting, council redistricting. Back at, after the 1990 census, when my office was in Providence, I was the contractor to redistrict the, the Providence Council districts and the Warwick Council district. So when the redistricting data came out at the end of last year, I thought, well, let's see what, what's going to happen in Coventry. So I added them up. The way the redistricting works is we get the population figures by block, by census block. And then you add up all of the blocks in each district and see if there's any change from trying to balance them as equal as possible. So I got the council boundaries from Kim Brice. This was a few weeks ago and added them up. Where our total population as reported by census is 35,779, which gives us a, if, if each council's district is going to have an equal amount, it'll be seven, one, 7,155 people. So looking at the current boundaries, we find as, as you're, and not at all surprised that the most growth happened in district four, then in district five, and then in district three. So district five is 395 people over the 7,100, 7,155 people, which is not a heck of a lot. So districts one and two had much less growth. So they'll need to pick up a few blocks along the edges, in the eastern edges of their districts or wherever, and, and order to equal them out. So that's, that's my guess on what's going to happen.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So stay tuned to the public meeting that, that Board of Canvases will be having when they discuss this topic. Thank you, Mr. Manier. Appreciate it. Any other members of the comment, public who would like to make a comment? Please raise your hand in Zoom. I see no others. Okay. Thank you. May I have a motion to adjourn at, let me see.
8:45. I'll make a motion.
8:45.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Roll call, Mrs. Shockley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lima?
Yes.
Ms. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc? Mrs. Dixon? Yes. Five yes, no nays. The motion passes. Thank you. We are adjourned. My next meeting is the 28th joint meeting with the Town Council School Committee and our Rhode Island Legislative Delegation.